The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
I have one more motion to make with the Police Department. And that motion is to promote Detective O'Brien to Sergeant.
A motion and a second to promote Detective O'Brien to Sergeant position. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sergeant O'Brien, please. Raise your hand, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will discharge my duties in my office.
And I will discharge my duties in my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank you all for your service, too. Thank you very much.
Everyone that's here with Gary and Detective O'Brien can absolutely snuck out. You're welcome.
All right, next I need approval for September 15th, July 15th. Regular meetings.
So moved.
I have a. Have a. Same thing, sorry. Uh, I think it was the regular meeting minutes. Um, just, yes. The first line of the regular meeting minutes needs to be changed. It says Chair, not buddy's chair.
Thank you. I made that correction.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second with the correction.
So moved with the correction.
Second, correction.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But. And communications and interactions. Now we have the saves, September report.
Okay, I'm just gonna do it stuffy.
Uh, trick or treat is scheduled October twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen, from six P M. to eight P M. I have a thank you letter from Adams County S P C A, uh, N Y M C A, Adams County now with the Lions, Duffmore Memorial Library, and Adams County Office of the Meeting on recent two thousand nineteen donations. And then we have Comcast channel complete communication. Uh, reports from monthly operations to the Congress.
Hold on a minute. Mr. Chair. Can you tell the people what Comcast is going to do to us?
It says just channel changes to the stars and encore the drama. Now the drama is a Spanish language network featuring Helen Novas and, I'm sorry, and series. We are communicating with things that affected customers to read the message.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, I have several motions here from the administration. First motion is to authorize to enter into a five-year agreement for audit through twenty twenty-four with Brown, Schultz, Sheridan, and Fritz, formerly Reagan and Lehman. Rager and Lehman, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second. Just a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But. Motion carries.
I have another resolution authorizing, authorization to approve Resolution twenty nineteen S, adopting management policies and bylaws, and to authorize the manager and solicitor to begin the process of amending current ordinances as needed.
Mr. Chairman, I used to speak to that before a vote was taken. May I do that, please? Yeah.
I'll second. We have a moment to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I may have mentioned this before in attendance at other meetings, but I do believe your public comment should be at the top of the agenda because the purpose of public comment is for the public to be able to have input and comment on action items that are appearing on the agenda. This is an action item, the second bullet here, and I, I'm a little concerned about the board delegating their legislative authority to appointed personnel who were not elected by the people. That's a serious matter. The, uh, you're, you're, by resolution, you are circumventing the legislative process when an ordinance is to be either written or amended. In fact, on the second page, you have under Township Solicitor Authorization to Advertise an Ordinance. And so you are granting authority, legislative authority of the board, or so it appears. I've not read the resolution. I don't believe it was advertised. It may have been on the website, but was I did not see it there. But it is, it is not appropriate for the legislative body, the board of supervisors, to delegate their legislative authority to appointed staff. Granted, you can hire appointed staff to carry out your policies. You can hire appointed staff to give you consultation, but you cannot delegate your legislative authority to appointed officials. That is too much power in the hands of people who were not elected by the citizens of this township. Power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. And so I would ask the board, unless there are clear explanations as to why something like this is being done, to defeat that resolution. It is simply not appropriate. It's not consistent with our democratic principles. It's not consistent with the second-class township code. It's probably not consistent with the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. By the way, I live at one seven four Panther Drive. I'm sorry, I didn't give my address. So, uh, I haven't read the resolution, um, but as it's, as it's written here and as it's being presented, it looks to me like there's a delegation of legislative authority to appointed individuals who have not been elected by the citizens of this township.
Here, here, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, I couldn't agree with you more.
They have a thing that's, it's, perhaps inarguably drafted in terms of the agenda, but the, the resolution does not authorize the manager or the solicitor or any other appointed personnel to amend ordinances. As, as I think the motion was read by Mr. Strebit, is to authorize the manager and solicitor to begin the process of amending ordinances that are in conflict with the resolution. And that will go through the full public process, advertisement, and vote by the legislative body.
So amending, you're using amending instead of the term reviewing existing ordinances?
The process of amending it. So you go through the process of preparing a draft amendment to an ordinance, present that to, to supervisors. If they approve it for advertisement, it would be advertised. It would be discussed at a public meeting and then voted on.
Okay, and as long as what you just articulated is clearly referenced in your minutes here this evening, I'm fine with that.
That's the way the motion was made.
Okay, well, that's. That's not how it was interpreted.
Understood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Call for the question.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But. Motion carries.
Okay, um, I have a third, um, motion to authorize a full-time staff member to a full-time staff position effective December the thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I'm sorry, October the thirtieth. I'm a little dyslexic. October the thirtieth, uh, two thousand nineteen.
A motion and a second to authorize the hard-time staff member to full-time staff member effective October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But.
I have another motion to authorize a tax collector reimbursement request for the P S T C A annual convention, which would be the Tax Collector Convention, as I understand it. Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I have seen from the vote.
I have another motion to authorize and create an emergency service fund and deposit account.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Question?
But.
Could, could you explain, could you comment here? Could you explain to the audience the purpose of that, the background of that?
The township has, um, a general operating reserve account. And the township believes that it must now plan for more capital, long-term capital expenditures, um, which would include fire, police, emergency services. So, um, the purpose of the authorization is to create that separate capital, um, account to deal with future expenditures for those purposes.
Is there a dollar amount stipulated?
There is not a dollar stipulated, except for in the budget.
Which is the, which is the impetus for tax increase, for budget, I understand? Just wanted to make sure. So part of the tax increase is going to be for. So for rainy days, right? Okay, so make sure people wear that.
Okay, yeah. That, we're, um, have a resolution, uh, twenty nineteen U, and that resolution will establish that fund. It's.
Pardon? Jeff Hall.
Second. Uh, the motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty nineteen U. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But.
And one final administrative, um, motion would be to, um, make a motion to authorize the staff to advertise the twenty twenty budget to be open for review from October the twenty eighth through November the twelfth. It will be advertised in the Gadsburg Times.
A motion and a second. And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But. Ready, Tom?
That's it.
Thanks for that. Uh, moving on to public safety.
Okay, under public safety, I also have, um, a, an authorization to enter into an agreement with Cody Systems for the police records management. We've had, we're having an issue with our record management, and we had to look for, um, another system outside.
Well, the law changes.
And the law changes, yes.
Which requires us to move to a different system that's beneath the standards that you've altered.
Thank you for your clarification.
Second. Uh, motion and a second authorize to enter into agreement with Cody Systems for police records management. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But.
And also under saves, um, we have, during the month of September, saves responded to a hun, uh, thirty-one fire and rescue calls and a hundred and fifteen E M S calls for a total response of a hundred and forty-six calls. In Conawaga Township, saves responded to eleven fire, and that would be thirty-five point five percent. And forty-one E M S calls, that is a thirty-five point seven percent for the total response in the township of fifty-two calls. And that brings me to the end of my report.
Moving on to recreation.
Yes, we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for the basketball courts, and, um, we're working on some other grants at this time.
Ready, Louis?
Yes.
Uh, agricultural reserve?
Nothing at this time.
Next, we do two roads.
On the roads, uh, the main thing that's going on right now is a, a resolution team, which allows, and a state permit, which we received today, which allows us to install the preempt device, which basically what that does is the fire police can hit a button, have a light change, so that they can proceed to a call.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve. Resolution two thousand nineteen. Reentry, reentry device at September twenty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But. Thank you. Uh, question board?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Very, very.
Uh, I defer Dave for his report.
Uh, we're working on a, on a grant with the, um, Army Corps of Engineers, um, for the Palm Creek, um, recreation area. We have an issue over there that we have to daylight the stream. Someone put a bunch of boilerplate type of, uh, tanks in the, in the ground as a drainage, um, system, and we have to remove those and, and put in, uh, we have to daylight the stream, in other words, so that it actually flows the way it's supposed to. So we're working with the Corps of Engineers on a grant. It's rather a sizable grant, so, uh, we're hoping we can manage to get, so that's all I got.
Um, I'm told that I need, um, a resolu, uh, a motion to authorize staff to prepare a letter, um, to the Corps of Engineers so that we can, um, obtain that grant. Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But. Uh, moving on to Secretary of Treasury Board of Report. I need approval of Secretary of Treasury. The motion. The motion to approve the bill paid to be paid September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to public comment. We have anybody for public comment?
Yes. Charlotte Schaefer at forty-four South Allwood Drive. And I'm pretty sure the majority of everyone here is to redress their grievances with the township supervisors in regards to the Eisenhower Drive extension. And I'm just going to read something. Um, first, I would like to quote Plato, "Your silence gives consent." Silence being the lack of support for the residents of Conawaga Township who oppose the five C alignment, and your unwillingness to publicly take a stance against a project that will drastically alter the landscape and the livelihood of many, ushering in a host of negative elements to this area. Those of us here, including the more than five hundred signatures now, have signed the no build petition and are asking the supervisors to support your constituents by passing a resolution supporting the no build alternative and opposing the five C alternative, which will consume thirty-five acres of agriculture, five acres of commercial, and five acres of residential property through Conawaga Township. While more than ninety percent of the people in the alignment of the bypass have signed this, they're directly impacted, um, it's important for you and the public to hear from some of those who are here. Not all of them could be here, but there are some here, like Mr. Wilkie, um, Jackie and Gennell.
Mm-hmm.
Joni Swope, Adam Smith on Oxford Avenue, and, um, Stephen Smith.
May I be add to the public comment? Because I'm here to oppose the extension, and I would like to make some comments.
Yeah. Yeah. But Mr. Wilkie would like to address the board also. Well, actually, there's a whole.
I'm going to back up just one, the one, uh, one here of the stormwater management. It's got this nice little newsletter here from the township. It says the township has a credit assistance program, which offers credit to up to fifty percent of the annual stormwater user's fee. I don't know what all that's about, but what do you have to do to get that fifty percent? And, and another thing is, when we, when this came through, we had a retention pond built, and now we don't, don't get any credit for that. We're paying three thousand and eighty-eight dollars for our stormwater management, which is ridiculous. Now, I've got a question for you people. Does every resident in township pay that stormwater management, or just the property owners? So, so you think, still on that for a minute. Now we're going to get down to the Eisenhower extension. I've been up here for, uh, come June, I'll be living in this area for fifty years, believe that. I came from Maryland, but, uh, up here on Oxford Avenue, they've got, got these stakes in my, in my field, and they're talking about the turnabout and all that. It's going to destroy what I have worked my behind off, more than you people can comprehend for the last fifty years, working, believe it or not, as much as a hundred hours a week to accumulate and to put together what I've done. You people probably think I have a lot of money and can do what I want. That's not the case. I've worked for everything and twice as much and twice as hard for what I've got than most people can even comprehend. Now, whoever's making these, I don't have to, how many of you people on this board are being affected by the Eisenhower bypass? It's going to piss your house? It's going to piss your house? Your house? Your house?
Strebit. But his wife signed the petition.
So, there you go. It's not, it's not, it's not adversely affecting any of you people. So what do you care about it? And I'd like to know what, there, there's something that stinks in the woodpile somewhere that's allowing all this to happen. You people are not, you're not, you're not working for the residents of Conawaga Township. I've been here for, I said, just about fifty years now, and I wouldn't advise anybody to move into this township. Now there's, now there's a couple farms out here on Racehorse Road. I understand you changed them to, uh, to, um, residential instead of farming.
Against the will.
They, against their will, they didn't want that, but you ran it through anyhow, to what, to what end? And also, you've got this park out here now, and it says in here about put your trash in the trash cans and all that, but you've got the playground out there with not a trash can on it. And for the playground, you've got to walk a quarter mile to get to it, unless you park on, on, uh, on the street out there. So you people have a lot, a lot to look at yourselves for, that you're dumping on everybody else. You're not working for the people that have you here. Simple as that. Simple as that.
I'm Jackie Barham. My house is three seventeen Jonathan Drive. I'm on the corner of Providence and Jonathan. I have a road on two sides of my house right now. You're talking about putting a third in my backyard, just about. I'm totally against it. We moved into Adams County to get away from DC area. We like the farmland. We like the fresh air. We wanted to get away from pollution, the exhaust, everything that goes along with it, the litter that comes out of people's cars when they travel. That's why we moved here. And now, you're doing it to us again. I'm totally against it.
I'm Gennell Grass, I have asthma. And the reason I moved here is to get away from all the pollution and everything. Thank you.
I'm Steve Smith. I own the farm on five oh nine Church Street. You, you guys, they wanna take away eight percent of my livelihood, which can never be replaced. Things to consider when you take away farmland, it takes an acre to feed ten people. So, we're taking away, what, thirty-five acres of farmland if we do this extension?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Or thirty-five of ag, yes.
Thirty-five of ag. So, you consider how many less people we have, we have the availability to feed.
I like to eat.
It, it affects us directly. We put our farm in land preservation so we could keep it as farmland. Our farm's been our family for ninety-plus years that we've been on that farm. I oppose this vehemently. Do not want this road coming through my farm. Thank you.
I'm Adam Smith. I live at two seventy-six Oxford Avenue. I came to a township meeting a year ago with questions about stakes and paintings that were on the road in front of my house. I was told by the Ms. Krebs that no one would lose property. We have all these fields out here, and I'm also opposed to the fields being taken as well. When I went to Saves for the meeting, both my neighbors were off the map, and I was told that with a minor adjustment to the roundabout, I would also be off the map. We bet, when I came, I begged for transparency so we could find out what was going on, and I had to leave the meeting at Saves and tell my neighbors that according to proposal five C, they're no longer on the map. So, there's been no transparency. I feel as though the honesty here is lacking, and I'm with these guys that I would oppose an extension that would take my property off the map.
Good evening. My name is Joni Swope, and I live at three eighty-six Church Street. I'm a forty-year resident and homeowner in Conawaga Township. I've seen much development through those years. It's impossible not to have development, but you need to be aware of what is good for the area. The advertised stated need for the bypass is to improve travel and safety through the area. There are several concerns with this. One, the monetary cost is astronomical for the reported four to seven minutes of time to be saved. No statistics of comparison regarding safety have ever been presented, and I have been on the, a consulting party where they meet occasionally. The proposed path impacts historical properties as well as homeowners being able to continue the enjoyment of the way of life and use of their properties within Conawaga Township. An issue that I don't believe has even been brought to the attention is the impact on wildlife in the area. A bypass will encroach upon the homes and habitation of animals, their feeding grounds, and lead to decreased populations. Many residents, and most recently, the PA Historic Preservation Office, questioned whether other non-construction alternatives, such as altering traffic patterns, installing signals, et cetera, had been given adequate consideration. I don't think we think so. If any legitimate traffic, if, if any legitimate traffic concerns truly existed, the five C build will only push those concerns to the Brushtown and Bonneville area. What then? Are we to be ignorant and not be concerned about the large picture? Other neighboring local governments have issued resolutions or proclamations representing their constituents. The vast majority of the five C build is within Conawaga Township, and we have heard nothing. I think in light of the petitions that have been signed, the representation here tonight that is flowing out into the hallway and possibly outside, I think it is only fitting that you submit a no build proclamation. You, Conawaga Township. It is time that you represent the majority of those you are supposed to be representing and not the pockets of those who will benefit financially from this project. Local government is to be for we, the people, not solely the wealthy. Pass a resolution for no build and tell those involved in pushing this project to go back to square one if they truly are concerned about the traffic and safety, and search other alternatives that will better serve all of the Hanover area.
Over next, folks, I'm Squid. I've been here nine months. I'm a brand-new homeowner right down the street on Franklin Drive. What a beautiful place. How many folks here came from the Washington or Baltimore area? Lots of hands. Nineteen sixty-six, my place was a very nice little town, just like Conawaga Township. And then, that kinda stuff started showing up. By nineteen seventy-six, it was crowded. By nineteen eighty-eight, it was ridiculous, and by two thousand, it was time to leave. So, I've watched through my lifetime for things like this in the Bowie City Council, in the chambers of Prince George's County, places like this with lots and lots and lots of angry residents. Let's get this straight now. These people are pissed. I'm pissed. So, I've seeked to escape from endless sprawl in a lot of places. I've been sprawled out of PG County, Maryland. I got sprawled out of a place in Florida. Now, I'm here. Sports fans, that is sprawl. You build any, any manifestation, and once it's in there, the floodgates are open. We're gonna get urbanized. We're gonna be Philadelphia. We're gonna be Baltimore. We're gonna be Washington, and we're gonna be Han-, Harrisburg. And the hands are trembling because I'm pissed. And I knew about this plan coming in here, and even, you know, this is a wonderful place, even if it were to happen. But this is an absolute disgrace. I've lived in this place. We walked over to Hanover. Hanover is a dying town. We'll drive up and down most of these big boulevards. Two-thirds of all these industries are done. They're finished. The restaurants are closing, all the things, you know, it's a dying town, and I read that report that's saying, whoa, we're gonna have this massive increase in cars and traffic jams on Highway one fif-, one sixteen. Police! So, now we, I oppose the idea that we need this fantastic growth of a freeway, a beltway around McCherrystown, because someday, we're gonna have a whole lot more traffic out there. Yes, sports fans, that problem in McCherrystown can be fixed with three traffic lights. I'm running. Well, I'll go on forever, but I tell you something. If that thing gets built, we are screwed. And if it, if it gets delayed a little bit, we'll just wait twenty years until a third of us are all dead. I'll be one of them. And I've seen it. So, Bowie went from small to not-so-small, to big, to really ugly, and now I, I, anyone on this council, get in your car, drive fifty miles south, and go into PG County, drive around Bowie, and see the wasteland that place has become. And that is precisely what's gonna happen in this township.
Thank you.
Just a second. Sir, I'm sorry if you said I did not catch it. What is your name, sir?
William Popovich, eight two five seven seven two. P.O.P.O.V.I.C.H. Will I be getting a visit tomorrow to law enforcement?
My name is Ellen Ryan, and I live at thirty-six Franklin Drive in McCherrystown, which is in Conawaga Township. I too am a new resident. I've been here, I think, eleven months. I too have lived in many places, and I have attended many meetings like this. And I heard about the extension drive too, and I said, oh my God, not again. I moved here because I did a lot of research, and the zip code that I chose to move to had the lowest crime rate in Adams County. I come from places where they built those kind of extensions, and they became crime zones. They became places where I would no longer could walk around my neighborhood. My husband and I just walked around Cherry Village, and I said, isn't this wonderful? We can walk here because we're not gonna have a drive-by shooter. There won't be drug dealers over at Perkins if we go there for breakfast. Some of us know what this means. Exponential growth, crime, and every land use and zoning meeting in the United States is a fraud. Somebody in the back rooms made the deal. Guess what, folks? This has already been decided, and unless there's a lawsuit, it will happen. Whatever happened to keep Pennsylvania beautiful is a myth. The farmers around here, they deserve their properties. No farms means no food. We talk about preservation, it's a joke. I heard all your little reports, Ag Report, Pres- Farm Preservation, no report, no report. Okay, let's talk about this. I wanna know why these meetings are not videotaped and archived for the public. Not everybody has the time or the energy to come. It's called transparency. We need to know what's happening. You wanna publish your budget? Budgets are really important, and they're really hard to understand. All these magical numbers and these accountants do it. Nobody understands what's going on. It needs to be published, all of your meetings, I suggest, in the merchandiser. Nobody reads this for a time, or the Hanoverians, or the Georgiaans, or the New York City because all of them are owned by USA Network, and they're all the same. There's no local news, I mean, like, nothing. When it came to vote, I didn't even know. Mo, everybody runs, everybody's running on a post. There's not even any information about voting, so that's why the voter turnout is so low. Exponential growth is destroying the United States, and every little, this place must have been targeted because it was just too beautiful, it didn't have enough crime, and there's just too much land. We have to turn everything, bulldoze everything and turn it into a townhouse, an apartment complex, and make sure it has enough crime and traffic. Otherwise, the powers that be won't be happy. Okay. Farm preservation must be reserved. Everyone gets the merchandiser, not everyone reads it for a time. We need more transportation. Are you concerned tonight about a fire violation of having this many people in a small room? Why wasn't it in a highters house? Where is the regional cred? I have this terrible speed thing in Pennsylvania. But again, you drive up in Eisenhower, Ryan Steakhouse is closed, Sears is closed, there's a bank up in Eiffel Burger's closed, that Clebbles has been here for seventy-five years, they're closed, Bonton's gone. So, what are we gonna do? We're gonna bulldoze more farmland or rezone farmland and make it commercial, and we're not gonna, we have no concept, the concept of restore, renovate, and repurpose. Whatever happens to that? Traffic control is non-existent. A few simple traffic lights could solve the problems, and so could a couple of one-way roads. Okay, why decide to count that as done and Highway one triple the population? That will mean more taxes, higher school property taxes, and people are losing their homes because they can't afford the school property houses. Farmers, they need our help. There's this new crop called hemp. I heard Pennsylvania's interested in it. That helps if our farms survive. This isn't supposed to be a land grab. It's probably, people want the land, and they wanna build apartments and townhouses because we've overbuilt the retail here, okay? We have all those restaurants and stores, and they don't have enough customers, even though millennials don't shop that way anymore. They just buy online and have everything picked up. We still wanna destroy these farmers' land. Farms must be preserved.
Yes.
And they must be preserved. And Adams County, I'd like to know where the county commissioners or any of them here tonight? They're running through our office. I haven't seen one sign or one flyer about any of them over here, so I decided that Conawaga and McCherrystown, we are the stepchildren of the county, and they want to develop all this land out here, you know, all that land, let's sell it and destroy the area. I say no to build, and I think this council, or whatever you call yourselves, needs to support these constituents. We're tired of being left behind, and it happens all over the United States, because I have lived in five other states, and it happens. You have a beautiful region here. It is beautiful. It is paradise, but it will be destroyed if you allow that to happen. Thank you.
Why doesn't Utz or Clark's do all their business at night? I mean, the people here in PA can do all their business during the day. Things would be fine then. Because I know that she's billed to Clark's and, um, uh, Utz.
Ma'am, your name, I guess, please. Name and address, please.
Oh, Pam Wallace. And it's St. Michael's Way. There's one going right behind my house. And I wanted to ask too, are they gonna supply a sound barrier wall for these things? Because you're taking away our privacy. See, nobody said anything about that.
Thank you. Billy Loughlin, thirty Bethel Court. About thirty-seven years ago, my mother, who's right over there across the street, and my father moved into Cherry Village when I was in sixth grade, and just two years ago, my wife and I and our two kids moved back into Cherry Village, uh, right around the corner. It's not a bypass community to us, and we don't want it to be. We moved in there, we wanted to get back to Cherry Village, and we don't want it to change with that road at all, so please don't see this as a bypass community. I would like this to be a community where my kids wanna move back to just like that.
My name's Allison Maggie. I live at fifty-eight Barley Circle. Um, our property bumps up to Sunday Drive, so it'll come right in right behind our house. Um, I'm for the no build. So, my husband and I, we served in the military and moved nineteen times in twenty- So my husband and I, we served in the military and moved nineteen times in twenty years with our seven kids. And we moved to Hanover and we love it. And our first home was on twenty-eight Shoshone Drive, which backed up to one sixteen and right across from the Food Lion. And we thought, we just couldn't stand it any longer and we moved to Barley Circle. And where now all the one sixteen traffic will now be in our backyard again. And I know, you know, we're just a little family, little people. And so what that we moved to get the traffic out of our backyard right to the place where it will be right to our backyard again. I'm glad that you're listening to all these little people. I mean, it's very small compared to what this man is sacrificing. But I want to say thank you to all of you. Number one, for listening. Number two, just hearing what you guys do when we're not all here, just hearing. I'm very grateful for public servants. I know what it's like. I'm a mother of seven, I have a thankless job. And I know what it's like to serve and for people to not understand how much you sacrifice for them when they don't see it. And then they come all angry and ugly. But I'm glad that we can say what we'll be losing and that it's not a small thing to us. And I came to actually ask the question, is there, is there hope for us? Or are we just, you know, is this just a show for us to vent? And you guys just have to sit through it and, or is there any glimmer of hope? And then my second question is, if there is no hope, can we get sound barriers? But, but is there truly, does anyone know if there's, there's any hope for us to not to have the no build, you know, pushed through? I mean, to be truly be represented and for someone, you know, some David to stand up against Goliath for us? Is there hope?
Charlotte, did you submit the petition to Pendot as they requested?
Yes, they're on there and then I have more that I will submit.
Did you submit it to them? Is monitoring me did not get any?
It's, it's on their website. They are on, they are on their website. It is on EisenhowerDrive.com or EisenhowerDriveExtension.com. When you go into all of their files.
Record process.
No, no.
Only they needed the official.
I submitted it to Ben Singer.
You handed it to him?
He has got them. And then he gave them to the gentleman and they uploaded them online. The first packet, I have another packet that I will submit to them and they will be on there. But I, I do wanna recap, the purpose of tonight is to ask for the supervisors to pass a resolution supporting the no build and opposing the five C alternative. Two years ago, Don, you and I sat up in that meet the candidates night. And you said, since your accident, the community did so much for you, you wanted to give back to the community. It's your turn. This is where you can give back to the community. Everybody in here is asking you to give back. It's just as simple as passing a resolution. It won't cost you anything.
My question is still, is this just some formality that has to be gone through? And is, do any of you think there is any hope for us? Or are you too afraid to say if there's not?
I think we did.
We don't know.
We don't know what the process is.
I wonder what the states don't.
Well, we're, we're okay there. We're in Penn Township, passed resolutions.
Yes.
Pushed off by us. Can we pass a resolution saying no, final straw?
Yes.
How do you all feel about it?
Other townships.
This plan is in, this plan is us. Why can't we say no to this plan?
I mean, why are we rolling over here?
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I'm trying to sit inside three forty Kirk Street. I mean, you gotta just pop the freaking body cat dealership next to my house. So I really don't want a freeway going there too. You know, I moved out here for my daughter so she could grow up outside of town. And basically you're bringing Eisenhower Drive right beside my house. And that's, and my family's lived there for twenty years. It's just, well, it's just disgusting that you would even consider letting something like that come into our community. But I don't see how you see that. Because I don't see how you can say you don't know what's going on. You either pass a resolution and say, well, this township's not allowing you to build to happen? Or you're just gonna roll over and say, yeah. I mean, so, I mean, it's not that pretty hard. Sometimes you gotta make a tough decision and sometimes people aren't gonna like it because you gotta make it anyway, so.
Where do you all stand on this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, many of you probably don't know me because I've been out of office for quite a while. I'm a former county commissioner. This project was on the drawing board when I became a commissioner in nineteen ninety-one. That's how old it is. And I can tell you then it was being pushed by the commercial industry of Hanover and Penn Township. Nothing, nothing has changed there. So the way these projects work is that Pendot does a long-term plan. Generally, a ten-year plan is referred to. This project has not been on the ten-year plan for many, many years. It did get on the, I, I left office, by the way, in, in two thousand and seven. So this was done long before I left. The ten-year plan is a process that Pendot uses all around the state. What gets on the ten-year plan in Adams County is generally recommended by the Adams County Planning Transportation Organization, an acronym known as ACTPO. This board really should become familiar with that if you haven't already. ACTPO, and I don't know when the vote was taken to get this on the ten-year plan. And then from there, Pendot puts it on the plan and then it moves up. It moves up in priorities over time. And again, this, this plan has been on the drawing board since the mid-eighties. I became a commissioner in ninety-one and served till two thousand and seven. And that plan was, was there when I got there in ninety-one. Despite county officials not really moving the plan along, it kept coming up every so often on this ten-year plan process. This township needs to contact the Adams County Planning Office and ACTPO and the Adams County Planning Commission. And if it is the wishes of this body to support the folks here tonight, simply tell ACTPO and the Adams County Planning Commission to notify Pendot they want the project taken off. That would be the first, that would be the first. That would be the first step. These, these projects do not begin at the local level. Local municipalities may advocate for them if they have it in their best interest. To defend this body sitting here, I don't think any of these folks were promoting this. I think they inherited it. But I think you can go to the, to ACTPO and the Adams County Planning Commission and get them to begin the dialogue with Pendot to potentially have the project removed from current plans. Now, what would happen, I don't know. But it seems to me that that's the route you need to take because that is who Pendot is going to listen to. Pendot, Pendot came to you folks and started giving you alternatives when it looked like the project was going to come to fruition. That's when they notify, and that's how Pendot operates. And so I think perhaps a resolution would be in order. But I think the real strongest communications needs to come from the Adams County Transportation Planning Organization and the Adams County Planning Commission. And we've dealt with this. And, and, and again, the members on those boards now probably aren't the same when this project got started. I'm, I'm certain of that. But those would be the folks to contact Pendot and say, we don't think this project is necessary. However you wanna work. And, and there, and there are many legitimate concerns raised here tonight. I, I wanna raise one other point. I wish I'd have had this group here two months ago when I strenuously asked this board not to change the zoning on five hundred acres of land on Route one sixteen.
I tried, really, I tried.
But let me, let me.
Transparency that you were talking about.
Yeah.
Really, I, I work swing shift. And I, I don't get to see these things. I, I, it's hard for me to even make it to these meetings. Might I've been able to request another issue that is gonna be compounding off of this extension too. But he, he's right. I mean, transparency is a big thing. I, I can't even see a lot of explanation. And when you do get these online, they're plain.
Let me, let me just close by, by this. In, in my other life, I am an educator at York College. I, I teach state and local government. And in about three weeks from now, two lectures, two weeks in a row, will be on land use. Land use is fundamental. It is absolutely fundamental to everything we do in local government. It drives the economy, it drives our society, it drives culture. The way we use our land is very fundamental. And the problem or the challenge we have is that the way we make land use decisions is done by volunteers. These folks, for the most part, are volunteers. But there is a planning commission in this township. There is a zoning hearing board in this township. And oftentimes, it's like pulling teeth to get people to serve on those boards. And I'm sorry, I gotta give a civics lesson here. But oftentimes, we go out and we solicit somebody who'll say, yeah, I'll do it, instead of getting somebody that really understands or wants to understand land use and be passionate about it. That's what we need if we're gonna stop the urbanization that's been talked about here. We need people on these boards that deal with land use to take it seriously and to say no to the developers. And to change our ordinances that make our township more agricultural friendly and, and so on. That's critically, critically important. So, and I know, I know all of us are busy and it takes, it takes a lot of time to do these things. But unfortunately, that's the structure we're stuck with. And so I, I hope at least some of you from your comments here this evening would consider perhaps in the new year, at some point, serving on the planning commission in this township or serving on a zoning hearing board that can be right in the front lines of these very critical decisions.
From what I understand, people have offered to serve on the committees and there's a gentleman here tonight that was on a committee that was removed for unknown reasons off of a committee.
But in terms of this project, I think, I think talking to ACTPO and the county is, is the proper way to, to start.
My name's Belinda Nagle and I'm at two ninety-three Jonathan Drive. And we're all on, most, all of us that live along Jonathan are represented here because it's going immediately behind our property line. We, I heard something about, oh, they were gonna give us a hundred and fifty feet before they, you know, build the property. Then I heard that wasn't true. Then I heard they were gonna build fast-growing shrubs to try to disguise it. And then I heard there was a sound wall going up and they were gonna even let us pick the color of it. And now I hear that all of that was just, just to appease us and none of it was true. But anyway, I have health issues. I know that other people on Jonathan have asthma. I know somebody right around the corner has asthma. If we build up every single fresh air place, where are people that are sickly and have asthma going to live? My biggest concern is not, I'm losing my view. Yes, I hate that. I, I chose to live on the back row of the community so that I faced farmland and nobody was behind me. Gorgeous chapel in the sunset, blah, blah, blah. I care about the exhaust and the fumes of tractor trailers. The noise of tractor trailers going past my house, that upsets me. But it's the exhaust and me having to breathe in that. Do we not care about people's health anymore? You know, that's all I wanted to say. She made every valid, you know, point there was. I think we all agreed. But I just wanted to get out, what about people's health? Because, you know, it's like, you know, where are we going to breathe? And Adams County's already like one of the worst air pollution in the whole country, from what I understand.
Okay, I'm Belinda Vega, four sixty-five Providence. To elaborate on what the other Belinda was just saying. My husband and I met with the Pendot officials in May. We spoke for at least two hours. Air pollution was one of our huge concerns because our son had this very medically compromised. They said, sorry, we can't give you any details specifically for this area because air pollution is assessed at a regional level. So there will never be any determining factor as to how terrible the exhaust, the, and the light pollution and the noise pollution will be in this little section of the so-called bypass. Speaking with these Pendot officials for two hours, they could not answer eighty percent of our questions. They said some of the other routes had been taken off the possible map because farmland protection, farmland museum, that's why they dwindled down to three. They also said that the EA would be completed, the environmental assessment would be completed by the end of September, October. And I keep looking as much as I'm able to look on the site to see if the EA has been completed and I see nothing. Which again, as, I'm sorry, I forgot her name. Allison was saying, are we beating a dead horse? Is this just, are we just venting and the decision is already made? Yeah, oh, another thing is, I asked about depreciation of the value of our homes. Oh, we have no idea. I don't know that we know about that, but Harrisburg has had something similar happen. So that was a meeting with that. I have two other points I wanna make. I got nervous when you said about your rainy day fund for the emergency personnel. There is a former reporter for the evening Sun New York Dispatch, who's now a press secretary in Harrisburg, who has said he's aware of over hundreds and hundreds of homes going up behind Food Lion, which will stress the community, which will of course need more emergency personnel. How much more emergency personnel will the community need? Is that where your money for this rainy day fund is already being allocated? It, it made me ner-, it made me very nervous to hear that. So we are in absolute opposition. We moved here from Los Angeles. We love the area. Our children have had a great education here. We just are in absolute shock that Hanover Borough got wind or they were not really paying attention to what was happening. And bang, they got a resolution down, they got the mayor to support it, they got K. Kong to support it. On every single day, K. Kong is posting, posting something. I've been trying to contact Pastrano fifteen times. Fifteen times I have emailed Pastrano, he is not coming back to me. His bev, his representative, constituency representative in Gettser has. But he's not, not getting back to me. This has been for weeks. And I have been in touch with Ben Singer, is it Ben Singer or Pendot, constantly. So there is absolute cohesive opposition, cohesive opposition. We meet here for a reason. We don't want the development, we don't want party.
Oxford Avenue, basically right across the street here. I'm actually here for another issue, but it actually comes with this too. I'm looking to get a street light put out on the end of our lane at Oxford Avenue here at the corner. It's really dark. We have to put our trash out now at night, which there's ten residents that live back there that have to bring their trash out. And you can't set it out until after dark, which is five o'clock. You know, you can't set it out per township rule. So we have to take this stuff out and put it out at night in the dark with no light. Also check our mail, also be able to pull out and things like that and deter crimes too, adding a light there. So I'm here to request that. But actually, it kinda comes in tune with this because the amount of traffic that's gonna come from the new Oxford, this direction, to hit this road is gonna be astronomical. I mean, they ain't gonna go to one sixteen to come down to hit this. They're gonna come through Oxford Avenue, right in front of your house. To there, which even increases the amount of traveling that's gonna come down my, our road. Which also doesn't help me with lighting, that I don't have lighting to put my trash out, which increases the traffic. So I'm, I'm actually here to request a street light at the corner of our, of our. So I'm, I'm actually here to request a straight light at the corner of our, of our home, sorry. But it does, it does go with this too. And I did send, I'd sent a day mail, today marked. I've also sent a letter to the supervisors, but it's weird. I, I never, that was three, four months ago. I never even got a response by mail.
And we are checking into it with, with Meta and I did talk to them and we need to get out the tariff to see what's involved with it.
Why, why didn't I hear about that four months ago when I first sent a letter?
We did tell you, we did tell you, we checked into it and that's what we are doing. And it's hard to get an answer from that ed. It takes a while.
But I got answered pretty quick when I called. And it pretty much told me, yeah, I come to you all. Okay, but like I said, this actually is part of this and now I'm gonna have to increase traffic coming from that direction even more.
No, you won't.
Because of the extension.
I, I just forgot to mention sinkholes. I'm Belinda Nagle, 293 Jonathan. I mean, there's a sinkhole out there in Edge Grove that reopens, 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 has to be taken care of. And out Black Lane, that one that reo-, you know, this is a sinkhole prone area. I just don't, how are we building a big like forty-five, you know, tractor trailer kind of highway across where there's, it's prone, it's prone to be sinkholes?
We'll keep paying for it after it keeps going down.
Yeah, right.
I'm Greg Small. I live at 254 Oxford Avenue. Never done, you guys are taking my house down. Or PennDOT is. And I've been there for like three years and good neighbors and stuff. And I'm against all this. I mean, and I would appreciate if you all think about this and get on board with us. I mean, we really need help.
My, my name is Gene Kraus. I live at 282 Barley Circle. So the back of my property also goes up against Sunday Drive. Um, so I'm just here to oppose the, the five C extension. Um, and the hopes that you're willing to sign a resolution that you're opposed to it as well. Um, I lived in Hanover on Broadway, 704 Broadway for probably about fourteen years. Um, I have five children and in order for my kids to go out and ride their bicycles, I'd have to kind of block off the end of an alley and protect them from traffic. So we chose to move to this area to get away from the traffic and to have a safe environment for our children to play with. Um, I've been called a hypocrite, uh, saying, you know, well, you moved into a house, um, that is on what used to be farmland. So that's progress and this bypasses progress is what I was told. Um, and, and it's just not the truth. The truth was I used my VA loan to buy a house for my five children, my family, that was in a safer area than a developed area that we had previously lived in. So I understand development and I understand that things change and are gonna continue to change. But we have, we have an option here to at least voice our opinion against this and to do at least something like pass a resolution to try to stop this from coming through this area. Okay? I, there's a lot of ways. I mean, I could go into, you know, you can go Route thirty, you can go 116, you can come up 140. I was at Fort Mead, Maryland for ten years and drove back roads up here all the time. Um, there's a lot of different ways you can go. And even Main Street in Cherrystown, which I've been driving. I went to Southwestern High School. I've been driving my whole life. I, there's plenty of cutarounds. If you don't wanna wait in traffic, there's a lot of different options. We don't need to put a highway in for people to save a couple minutes. So I'm just, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
I'd like to add one more thing about, I wanna thank the gentlemen for the civics lesson about land use and zoning boards. I have a lot of experience with them in other communities. They simply really don't work. And sometimes the land use and zoning board members are really diligent and they study issues. And they do traffic studies and they do all that. And they'll come to the elected officials. The buck stops here. We vote these people in. In fact, people don't vote enough here, but we need to vote more and then have people run for office. The buck stops, stops here. When they, the land use and zoning board would say, we recommend that this project be a no-go. The elected officials will still vote for it. So sir, I do like the land use and zoning board, but volunteers don't work either. They need to be well-educated engineers and people really know about the sinkholes and all the projects. And volunteers are just average people. They don't always know. So, but the land use and zoning board doesn't work. The lady who is upset that the senator didn't get back to you, giving a homework assignment, Alec. A-L-E-C. It means American Legislative Exchange. They run all the state legislators and probably these older boards. They're making the decisions. It's the shadow government. So that's why when Trump says, we never get what we want, that's what it's about. So Alec, A-L-E-C, and that senator, he gets finally, his campaigns are probably paid for by, out through Alec, all their donors. That's why they don't call you back. Thank you.
I'm Bob Miller, 3176 Hanover Pike. And I would just like to, in light of the questions that were posed as to what could happen with our presence here tonight, I would like to ask the chairman of the board to inform us of the nature of the letters that have already been submitted to PennDOT, some as recently as within a few months or three weeks or so ago, with regard to this project. Could you do that, please? I understand there've been some letters recommending certain things. I don't have any details to them. I'm just, I'm just asking if they're, if that is, is that, is that true? That's the question. Is that, is that true?
There's one letter to PennDOT. The board supervisors has taken.
Can you speak up a little?
The board supervisors has taken the decision that we need to communicate to PennDOT. Uh, they don't wanna alienate PennDOT. They did not take the position that they are for any route. They took the position that should they go this route, this is what we feel we need for the residents of Conawalga Township. So when they walked the three routes with five C being the extension route that they're looking at, uh, we did write a letter to PennDOT on behalf of the, the board, uh, uh, saying that if that route goes in, we need the commercial area to have access to it, the commercial area which is over here right off of Pike. We also indicated in that letter that if the route would go through, we do not want any other accesses except for the commercial area because we do not want it to become Eisenhower Drive that you see over in Hanover. Uh, we want it to be a true extension. Uh, we have called, we have gone to all the public hearings that PennDOT has had. We have asked a lot of the same questions, if not all of the questions you guys proposed to us. And we don't have the answers from PennDOT either.
Yeah. Can I, you said you are recommending that they open up access to commercial vehicles up in the one section?
We are asking for one roundabout in the commercial section.
Okay, because this is supposed, this has been billed for quite some time as a limited access.
Correct.
So this will give basically a private roundabout or private access to Clark's and.
I'm not gonna do with Clark's.
I'm, I didn't say that. This will give private access or a private roundabout for Clark's and us? That is the commercial you're talking about?
No, that's a mistake. No.
So what commercial access are you talking about there?
Commercial land, zoning commercial land. Dave, do you mind where Eric is stepping up there and showing up on the map? That is all commercial land. That is all rebuilt.
Okay.
This is, Mr. Reaver has pointed out, that's been in the works since nineteen ninety. Actually, it was, you know, eighty's, uh, is when this all started. And the route, and PennDOT proposed the route as a local Conawalga Township bridge. Back then, Conawalga Township Board, and I don't know who, and might've been on at that point, opposed everything they could oppose because they did not want Conawalga Township to pay for it. So PennDOT, as he indicated, put it on the tenure plan. Uh, it is up now on the tenure plan at that home with state and federal money, with no township funds to be utilized for the construction of this extension.
So basically you're all right with it as long as you don't pay for it and then you're on your house.
No, she doesn't.
I think just, the point is of everybody being here again is for the board of supervisors to show a good faith that they support their constituents by passing a resolution. So can I ask for somebody to make a motion to accept?
Before anybody makes a motion, Barb was answering a question that Mr. Miller had answered, had asked. So let her finish, you know, her.
I, I think she went into enough detail. And it's going on eight o'clock and there are other people. And the whole purpose of us being here is to ask the board of supervisors to pass a resolution supporting the no build and opposing the five C. Can, we have a show of hands? Somebody, uh?
First of all, I think we gave everyone the courtesy to have the explanation. So I would like to complete my explanation.
We're addressing the board of supervisors. All due respect, we're addressing the board of supervisors.
And I am the manager for the board of supervisors and they have asked me to speak. So I am finding Charlotte on their V I. And board supervisors has heard from many residents, besides the one sitting there, that are also in favor. The board of supervisors sitting here represents over seventy-five hundred people. You have five hundred on the petition. We have pushed and we have called, and I call every week to talk to PennDOT, to get the answers you are asking for as well, so the board can be up to speed with what is going on as well. I do not get any answers, just like you do not get any answers. Yes, they spoke about being shrubbery. Yes, they spoke about walls. Yes, they spoke about noise barriers. But every time we try to get it pinpointed down to, it's, we don't know yet. We're not that far in the phase. So yes, we're living what you're living as well. Did the board say it's the best thing for the township? No. Did they say it's the worst thing for the township? No. We're trying to get all the facts together as well, for them to be able to make a decision to represent seventy-five hundred people in the township.
Do you have a number? How many of the seventy-five hundred are for it? I mean, people who are actively impacted? I mean, how many people have said yay?
Yes, there is people that come in and say, yes, we want this to go first.
Do you have a number?
No, I don't have a number.
Like five people said it or?
No, I don't have a number.
How about a referendum from the public so that we could all vote? We can make all seventy-five hundred would have a say. A referendum needs to be out here so that people can vote to, and an election can say, no bill. I think it has to be, it might be two for that one, but they could have a special election to do it. And that's what really needs to happen. And there needs to be more publicity. You know, even when we had the extension, our meeting over at the SAVs, this, you didn't have a sign out. I mean, it's, it's like a secret society to find out what's going on. It really needs to be a referendum. That's how it gets transparent and that's how a real democracy takes place. Then the people can vote on it.
I understand that. Uh, now we've given all you the courtesy. So if there's anybody that has not spoken, we would like to hear from them. And not, we do have, we have to hold for the rest of the agenda.
I just have one question, Mr. Trump. If PennDOT's not answering your questions, don't you think it would be wise to at least put up a little bit of resistance to them?
If they're, if they're, if they're being, if they have lack of transparency, as a community, wouldn't it be wise for us to?
They're responsible. They don't have that answer. Yes, they are still working on it.
Out on the road, that's not in my favor. And I respect that, but can we at least resist PennDOT until they come to?
It's like we're saying, if you guys aren't giving your answer, then why wouldn't you say no? Okay, but why wouldn't you push back and say, no, we don't want this until you can give us final answers? Because right now, they're not giving you anything. Penn, I mean, you're going to PennDOT, you're asking for information and they're not giving you clear answers. Until you can get clear answers, say no.
You know, Kate Klum is posting a timeline. I'm sorry for interrupting you. Kate Klum has posted a timeline that by winter, help me out, um, Kate Klum's posting a timeline that this will be finalized.
Around December.
Very soon. Why can, why did the Hanover Borough instantaneously create a resolution? Got the mayor's support, got Kate Klum's support and sent it off and said, some of our residents are in absolute opposition to the T S M. We support the five C. Why can't you, as a body, say many hundreds of our residents in Conawalga Township oppose five C? We support the no build at this time until this project can be reevaluated?
Yes.
Can we get a confirmation? Well, we, I mean, we don't have any answers either and it's gonna be too late. By the time the answers come out, it'll be too late. I really, I, I mean, if you look on Kate Klum's page, go look on Kate Klum's page and, and see what she's writing. She's given a timeline. She's posted all the PennDOT articles.
PennDOT posted that timeline for the past year and a half.
True, but, but there is something going on. If I have a press secretary from Harrisburg giving me information, which may be hearsay, but who knows? Enough to make us really nervous. All we are asking is a simple support of the residents that are in opposition to five C.
Yes.
That's all we're asking for right now.
And in the conversation with PennDOT, PennDOT is very much aware, and that's why I asked, to show it's missing.
But the parents, listen.
We have made them aware as well, that there are residents against it. We have made them aware that.
Why not a resolution? Why not just take into the stuff of the resolution?
A resolution would, would be fine, but I'll, I'll go back to the Actco issue. The question I have is if, if this board is gonna do a resolution to be opposed to this, and I think they should, there needs to be a way for them to oppose this. Has there been any discussion with PennDOT at any of the meetings regarding our zoning and land use laws? Is, is a commercial highway a permitted use in an agriculture zone? PennDOT has had many projects held up around the state. Now, it can get costly. They may come and sue you. They may say your ordinance isn't worth. And, and I would maybe, your solicitor might wanna start doing some case law research. But local land use laws have stopped major federal projects already. Your land use laws oftentimes work against you, as I said earlier. But you may have an opportunity where your land use laws here may work in your favor to stop this. If your local zoning ordinance does not permit a three-lane highway in an agriculture zone where most of this is going through, you have standing to stop that project. Might not be real strong standing, but you have some standing. So I would suggest that you look at your local land use laws as a way of stopping this. It might work. It's gonna take some research. Solicitor, I don't wanna put a bunch of work on you, but I, I know from teaching, federal, federal projects have been stopped. Federal projects, federal, federal projects with a lot of money behind them have been stopped by local land use laws. State projects have been stopped by local land use laws. It would be worth this board's effort to determine, maybe perhaps with the help of the engineer and the solicitor combined, whether your land use laws are written in such a way that you could, you could raise opposition to this project.
And just put yourself in opposition. How did you feel if it was going right behind one of your houses?
Even, um, on the state website for the PennDOT's Stop the I-, or shoot, sorry, the Eisenhower Drive exchange, um, the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office did respond to PennDOT. Um, I, I would recommend reading this. I would recommend everyone reading what their response was, which if you read it, they're in opposition to the five C. And they want PennDOT to go back and try other.
I'm, I'm trying to give you as much ammunition as possible, but the National, the National Register of Historic Places, a federal agency. One of its, um, local, um, treasures is the Conawalga Chapel. That's on the National Registry of Historic Places. That's on the National Registry of Historic Places. In the early eighties, when a regional sewer plant was being proposed, which sits not, not too far from where this road is being built, that plant was further north when it was being proposed. And that project needed to be moved two miles or a mile and a half further to the south because it encroached upon a building that was on the National Registry of Historic Places. Now, it's hard to make a comparison of a sewer plant that was going to be very large and, and kind of obtrusive to the area to a highway, but that may be an avenue that may need to be explored as well. The National Registry of Historic Places has a lot, they have a lot of clout. Um, and, I mean, they got, they got the sewer plant moved a mile and a half from where it was originally, originally proposed. Um, and I remember because I was just on borough council at the time, in the, in, in the eighties when that project was being proposed. So that's another, so I would give my summation is get hold of ACPO, make your claims to ACPO to get to PennDOT. Look at your local land use laws to see if your land use laws in benefit in stopping the project. And make contact with the National Registry of Historic Places and let them know what is likely to encroach one of their treasured builders. You folks need ammunition. If you're, if you're going to stop this project, you've got to give PennDOT something tangible that says, "It's not just that, not in my backyard. There are valid reasons why this project should not go through. I just gave you three of them tonight. I think you should research them."
I would thank everybody for coming. We're going to take all the comments into consideration, and we're going to look into everything that is said, and the board will then have to make some kind of decision. But, uh, we may listen to everyone's comments.
One more thing. You said not that they haven't made a decision yet. Why are they up there surveying my field? I went out and asked the surveyors what they're doing. We're surveying for the Eisenhower Extension. So why are they doing this if they haven't... What's that?
That's part of the homework they're doing to see where it's going to lie, where it can't lie, and what's going to happen. But we need to move on with our reading, so I thank everybody for coming.
Well, you said I will be hearing from you about your light.
Yes. And when will we know what your decision is? I mean, will we, will we hear something next week or in five months?
What would it hurt, Barb, to, to have a resolution? Like, just take a vote and have a resolution based, based on our, our ordinances and our agricultural...
The board will take everything into consideration.
It would be nice to, you know, if you personally would do that.
I've lucked out, I think.
I think we finished in time.